Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Twilla County Planning and Zoning Commission meeting held in the chambers of the Twilla County Building. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, and we'll have Mr. Tim Gillie give us that Pledge of Allegiance.
He didn't hear you.
He didn't. Go ahead, Tim.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Awesome. Are we on the line? Is Parkland there? Okay. No worries, no worries. So, next time this will do a roll call. Commissioner Beckstad.
Beckstrom.
Or Beckstrom, sorry, my fault.
He used to be here.
Mr. Beckstrom, Mr. Scott.
Here.
Commissioner Hope is here, Commissioner Stetz.
Here.
Oh, I did get it right. Commissioner Alder.
Here.
Fantastic. Commissioner Dow.
Here.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for being here. The third item of business is the reading, and not a reading, but the approval, rather, of the last scheduled meeting of July 16th. Is there any questions or corrections on those minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the minutes as written.
Second.
So it's been moved by Commissioner Scott, seconded by Commissioner Beckstrom. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it passes you and asks me. Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
Would you like to ask Commissioner Mitchell to bring his chair and join us?
I would love that, since you authorized me to do that. Commissioner Mitchell, please join us.
There's no chair up there.
No, no chair. It's like just like moving your bed up. Welcome, and thank you for participating. Great. So, the next item of business under subdivisions, S U B 2025-001. Matt and Doug Hogan are requesting a preliminary plat approval for west, for the west South Rim subdivision. And we'll hear from Trish on that.
Yeah, Trish, you call the planning staff. Can you hear me? Okay. So, if you guys remember, you approved a rezon for this a while back, and so the subdivision process has started. So they're requesting preliminary plat approval for, this is going to be a phased project, but in total, there'll be 226 residential lots. There will be some drainage easement that they're keeping open, and then they'll have another lot that's retention pond. And so, yeah, we're just looking at approval for preliminary plat. There'll be five phases along this. And all the reviewing agencies, such as fire, engineering, health, roads, planning, have already approved the preliminary plat, so we just are looking for your approval. Any questions?
Anybody want to ask Trish for the applicant before we open the public hearing?
So we're looking at one acre lots, correct?
Yeah, give or take a couple.
Give or take?
Yeah, they have to be one acre minimum, so they can't be smaller than one acre, because we did repeal our P U D code. So if you're familiar with the South Rim, the benches at South Rim, they were able to get some different sized lots for that because they were under that development agreement, which they gave open space to get those condensed lots. But here, we repealed our code, so it's just an R R one zoning, one acre minimum. Thank you.
Anybody else?
For Trish. So it says here that it's going to be developed and processed in five phases. Do we know how long those five phases are going to take to complete?
I, the applicant could probably better answer that question. It just, I'm sure it's up to their timeline. I'm sure they're looking at final right after, for at least phase one, right after this, so pretty quick, I'd assume.
Okay.
So it'll matter how fast you buy them.
Yeah. How fast they sell.
Any other questions? Okay, so I move that we open public hearing. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this matter, please approach the podium, say your name and where you're from for the record, and then sign the official ledger, and then speak your mind.
I've already signed. My name is John Drabek.
Will you turn the mic on?
Go ahead, you're good.
That's great, no. John Drabek, 2994 Ridgeline. It's along the eastern edge of this, just about straight to the right of the number five on phase five. I sent a letter about this a while back, questioning the density and the compatibility with the South Rim Phase 1, 2, and 3 previous development. So my first question is in regards to that. Is it the county's intention that this will be treated as a completely separate subdivision or as some kind of an extension of the existing South Rim Phase 1, 2, and 3?
We don't answer questions.
Yeah, unfortunately, we're in a public hearing setting, so we're not allowed to ask those questions. If the applicant chooses to answer that on behalf of, in his remarks, then that would be fantastic.
Okay. I hope they'll do that. The second one was regarding the compatibility with the nearest development, which is, of course, Phase 1, 2, and 3, which is mixed 1, 2, and 3 acre lots. There is some open space along the western edge, but a lot of what had been considered open space or trails internal to that have now been closed off either by the property owners or through overgrowth or other reasons. So I'm not sure how that gets counted as open space when it's not usable to the residents in that area. The other points are in the letter, and I wasn't here for the last meeting, but I was told by somebody who was that that letter was received by the council. So I hope you'll still consider that, raise some points regarding water, septic, the traffic on Silver Avenue, and the potential impact of the pit, if that goes in, on those houses. We've already got three houses that could be affected by that pit, and so this would add another 226 potential houses to that list. And as you all know, if you stood out in that field for more than about two minutes, you can't decide which way the wind is coming from, because it comes from all directions. So thinking that it's a prevailing west wind and the dust will all go to the east is number one, not the case. Number two, on my way here, I counted 14 5 acre or more lots and homes along the southern edge of Silver Avenue, just, again, just to the east of this. So the claim that you can only sell one acre lots in this area seems a bit of a stretch. That's it for me, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments? Seeing none, I move that we close public hearing. Great. So any further questions for the applicant? Do you want to hear from the applicant?
I'd like to, I would like to hear from the applicant. I have a couple of questions.
Doug Hogan, I'm the applicant. I'm happy to address at least the parts that I think that I can competently address that were raised with the one public comment. The question about how does this subdivision tie into or connect with the benches at South Rim subdivision? It's a completely separate project. In terms of whether or not, we've tried to keep in mind where trails exist, where open space exists, where infrastructure can be utilized in a smart fashion. I believe we've attempted to do so as best we can. But one thing that I noticed, and I think it's probably worthy of comment, I attended a South Rim Special Service District meeting, and I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about the various boundaries. For instance, the boundary of the benches at South Rim subdivision, you can see, it's pretty well defined. You can see where the houses are and where the lots have been built out. The boundary for the Special Service District is not the same as the subdivision. It encompasses much more land than just that one subdivision. In fact, it encompasses this proposed subdivision as well as some other additional land. So at that meeting, there were some concerns expressed about, well, would residents in this new proposed subdivision be able to walk on the trails in the benches at South Rim? My answer was, any member of the public can walk on those trails. They're, it's open. Question was asked about whether or not people in the new subdivision would be able to go to the park in the benches at South Rim subdivision. Amongst the people at the meeting, there, I'll admit, there were some people that thought, well, why should they get to come to that park? I think the belief was that it was only the homes in the benches at South Rim subdivision that have been paying taxes, that have supported, in addition to grants, generous grants that the counties offered to get that park built. But the very land we're talking about has been paying taxes to the service district the entire time. In fact, before anybody occupied any one of those homes, this land was paying taxes in that. So I don't see any reason why any member of the public couldn't go there. So I think there's some confusion about the difference between a subdivision, a second subdivision, a special service district, the county in general, all the different layers of control and governance. So to the extent that, I'm clarifying, this is a separate subdivision. Our intent is to try to make certain that the connections make sense, that the roads are in a way that the roads department says makes sense. We've attempted as best we can through engineering and through consulting with the agencies that have done the review to make sure that all the proposed improvements make sense. There was question about water. There's adequate water, there's, as part of this subdivision, there would be a million gallon tank that would be installed. That's a larger tank than currently provides service to the benches at South Rim subdivision. So we're attempting in every way, shape, and form to address, to meet or exceed the requirements as they exist in current law. Question about traffic, I don't think I can say more about traffic than what the traffic study provided. I don't know that I'm confident to give an opinion beyond what's in that traffic study. The folks who have done that review have credentials that would exceed mine. What I can say about the road is when there was five houses out there, people didn't like the road. Now that there's over 200 houses, people don't like the road. I imagine when these lots are all built, people won't like the road. Are there things that could be done that would make great improvement to that road? Absolutely. And I think those are things that the roads department, but the county is well aware of. There's a corner that's been a bad corner, a blind corner, right by Rick Wheeler's house, and just past the Huntsacre property, you kind of come around. It's kind of got a weird bank to it, and it's a blind corner. That's been a bad corner my entire life. It's gotten a little bit better each time the county has worked that road. It's gotten a little bit better. There's some spots on that road, again, not necessarily related to our subdivision, where the drainage, when you get a big storm, water collects, and the culvert that goes underneath the road doesn't seem to be quite in the right spot. The low spot's not where the culvert is, so water accumulates. I think they're well aware of that. So in time, will some of those changes happen and improvements come? I believe they will. As to the question about open space, I'm not exactly sure what was being asked other than this is dramatically different in terms of open space in the benches at South Rim. Mr. Duclos mentioned the reasons why. The code section that allowed for the benches at South Rim to be developed the way that it was no longer exists. We can't develop it the same way that prior subdivision was done. So with the existing code, we're doing what we can. And so that's, that's the best I can answer that question. There may be other things that you're wondering about that I haven't touched on. I'm happy to answer questions that you might have. There was one other thing, I forgot, timeline. That was brought up, how soon. County ordinance actually dictates how quickly we can go. We can't go any faster than we can sell, and there's some really good reasons for this. I spent quite a bit of time with our engineer talking about this very idea. If you go several years back, those of you who remember what things were like before the mortgage crisis in the 2000s, projects could be done, all of the improvements put in, and so the county might be taking on five phases worth of improvements with roads and everything, all the infrastructure done, not a single lot sold. So the land's still being assessed at a very low value. It's a raw, it's a buildable lot, but there's no house on it. Well, that doesn't mesh up with the amount of revenue you would need to take care of these new miles of asphalt if you're not assessing a home on that lot. So Twilla County, along with many, many other jurisdictions, kind of put a, for lack of a better word, I'll call it a circuit breaker provision in that doesn't let you get too far ahead of yourself in terms of putting in the improvements and then turning them over to the county. So we have to hit a threshold that's dictated by code, and I, is it 45%? 70%. So we can't go from phase one to phase two until we hit that threshold.
Right.
So that's what determines it. So the short answer to the question is, as soon as the market allows. As to when we would like to start, we would have liked to have started a year ago. But it's a lot of work. And for those that haven't gone through this process, there's some really good reasons why it's a lot of work. There are a lot of really good, important questions that need to be asked and answered, and it takes a lot of time to sort through it and to do a good job at it. So the amount of time, it's, it takes a long time. I'd have liked to have had lots available to sell the first of this year. It's not the case. So as soon as we can get there, that's the timeline we would like, but we want to make sure we fully comply. Any other questions?
Sounds great. Thanks for the clarification.
Judge Hogan, you may have already alluded to part of it. You said you're going to put in a water tank in. Is that going to be at the same elevation or higher of the existing?
It'll be, it'll be at a different elevation, a totally different location. It should be, it should be shown, and I don't recall exactly which, which breakout in your packet shows the tank and the elevation.
Okay. I couldn't find it, and I was gauging it off the old tank. I'm worried about phase three was the drop between the two.
And in fact, it's going to be at a higher elevation for pressure reasons. If you're trying to gravity flow and you want to hit the right pressures to make sure. What I can tell you, without specifically saying it's exactly right there, I can tell you that there was concern about fire flows, and we've made certain that the elevation we're going to hit, that it meets or exceeds all the required fire flows.
Thank you. That answers the question I had.
Yeah. This is a good question. Anything else? If something comes up, I'm happy to come back up if there's another question.
Yeah, it's one of the questions I had, so.
Wonderful.
Okay, thank you. I would feel badly if I didn't thank Trish and Michelle, their staff. There's a lot that they do. I know there's a lot that happens behind the scenes. It's a lot of work to go through this. So I wanted to express appreciation for all the county staff that have worked on this and the extensive review that's been done. So thank you very much.
One last question, maybe respectful self-serving request. But construction traffic, in lieu of what you mentioned yourself and other concerns are, and I don't even know if it's possible or illegal, but whatever, but what's the feasibility of having your construction vehicles approached from the west versus the east to ease that, that traffic tension on the curves? If it's unrealistic, I guess.
It can be discussed. Yeah, I think we're happy to work on that to the greatest extent possible. We don't want to put anybody in a bad situation. If there's things that are big things, we're going to, we're going to strongly recommend that they approach the Mormon Trail.
Right, correct.
When it comes to individuals ordering certain things from other suppliers, I don't know that there's a mechanism where we can require.
Well, I'm talking the main infrastructure, and that's the major vehicles, right?
Yeah. But that's certainly going to be our request.
Cool, awesome, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I almost called you Judge Hogan.
I have one question.
Yes.
What's your average number of lots in each phase?
Is it five?
Yeah, that's pretty average.
Oh, yeah, 45?
226 divided by five.
Yeah, 226 divided by five.
I'm not asking exactly, just an idea. The reason is, when you talk about, so under ordinance, and you would have to have 70% of those lots under contract before you could go ahead and start your infrastructure for the next phase.
That's my belief.
Correct.
And I run into this call, and it's a problem, because if you're watching movement quick, you're going to run out of building lots.
Right.
And everything comes, the rule in construction, right? Never start until you have to. When you start, don't stop. Because every time you stop, it costs you money.
We're certainly hopeful that as things play out, that there are favorable conditions and we're able to move through in an orderly and efficient fashion. I also understand that there are things that are beyond all of our control. I know when my folks developed the benches at South Rim project, they certainly were not expecting some of the things to happen that happened to them. And there was a, there was a five-year hiatus on everything, and that wasn't good for anybody. But I certainly hope we don't run into an obstacle like that, but our eyes are wide open. We know that bad things can happen.
45, you're probably going to be okay, but we've been running off of 25, and it's a killer for us, because by the time we get 70% or 75, we have 75.
Right.
We should have already been doing the infrastructure, and we have any permits for it, and we run into that again and again. So the stage we're doing now, like the Highlands, we're going to have 55 lots in that phase, and that may take the heat off of us then. But it really creates a problem for the builders and developers.
Sure.
If you're restricted too much there.
I certainly understand the problem, and I also understand the county's reason for having the rule and having lived through and seeing some of those things happen. It wasn't just Twilla County, it was all over the place. You saw developments that were, the infrastructure was all in, then conveyed to whatever the local jurisdiction was, and no homes. But roads that needed to be now on the maintenance schedule, and they were scheduled for chip seal, and there wasn't even yet a house that's been built.
Yep.
And so I understand the reason, and maybe as time goes, maybe that'll get refined a little better, and maybe we'll find the best sweet spot. I think an effort was made to get it as best as we could for now, the way it's written, and we'll comply with whatever's required. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve S U B 2025-001 at the preliminary plat approval for the proposed 226 lot with South Rim subdivision.
And there's no, okay. So it's been motioned that, Commissioner Scott has motioned that we approve S U B 2025-001. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
So it's been seconded by Commissioner Beckstrom. Any further, so it's been moved in a second, any further discussion? We'll do a roll call vote. Commercial, Commissioner Beckstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Stetz?
Yes.
Commissioner Alder?
Yes.
Commissioner Dow?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hope is a yes.
Wait, Commissioner Mitchell.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Mitchell. My apologies. Only six lashings, Commissioner Mitchell is a yes. So thank you, it is unanimous, it passes unanimously, thank you. I'll get you, I'll get used to you, don't worry. If I don't, it's just another mistake. Okay, the next item of business is rezones. R A Z 2025-093, Charles Akerlo, is that Akerloo?
Akerloo. That I fixed his name last time. There's no C in the last name.
Okay.
So this is another rezon request. They're coming in fast. So you guys tabled the last one for some more information from U Dot. And he's still kind of working on, they're aware of the project, obviously.
Didn't we, we tabled in May, and then we voted on it in July.
You voted on in July?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, so yeah, this is for the inland port. And they're just requesting that these parcels be rezoned from M E 42 M G. They are very aware of the floodplain areas, and they know what they can and can't develop. There's, for this rezon, there's not going to be a whole lot of development among here.
It doesn't say where he can and can't, and it also has no address, so it's kind of hard to.
Yeah, so.
It's kind of hard to say yes to a place.
When the council approved their, what's it called? Agreement, the project area, yes. It's very, it's spelled out within the contract of the council.
Correct, correct. And as a point of order, this is a rezon, not the plat approval.
Okay.
So when that comes, we'll know exactly where they can and can't develop.
Yeah, so it just encompasses. Yeah, it just encompasses the whole parcel.
Correct.
Just to keep it clean.
Correct. No, thank you, that's good clarification.
Yeah. Anyway, any other?
Any other questions for Trish?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Trish, I've got actually two questions on this. The parcels that are identified, the third one that says and, it ends in a question mark, and I don't know if it was U Dot that asked this question, or you on page 167 of the PDF. But it looks like they responded to you or somebody to, that we were asking for to identify those parcels. And their response was, let's move ahead with the application, and I will have legal description for you by the, by the time you're ready to schedule a planning commission. I believe we're at planning commission.
Yeah, the legal should be included all, yeah. So even though it has like a question mark on it, that's just the reporters' thing. But it should have its own legal, that's why it was cut out. Anything that has a separate legal, it creates a parcel. I don't know why there's a question mark.
Okay, the question marks just in there?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. The next one, and you know, the last time we met, the 13,683 daily trips, it was a thorn. The traffic study that was done by, let me make sure who that was, Hales Engineering states that that intersection requires no mitigation at all to handle that type of traffic flow.
Not until 2030. By that time, they request a light, and then as long as that light is timed correctly, they don't request any other mitigation that will build out by 2050.
This is for the intersection on I-80.
From the, yeah, the off-ramp, off Bermister to, like Bermister and to I-80, that's what they're suggesting to light.
Okay, so one of the things I asked last time was for a schedule from the applicant. He said he, he never really answered that question. Can we still get a schedule of when we would see, how we would see a ramp up in that area of that level of traffic?
I think it's just hard to project, because they really don't have all of their businesses coming in. They have like a handful of them that they know. And so when Hales Engineering creates their, their paperwork and stuff, when they create their study, they do it differently even than what our uses would be, right? So they have their own set of scheduling, and so they just did it at the very max high amounts. And so it may not even get to 13,000 trips. But that's just how Hales Engineering's schedule works.
Commissioner Scott last time said it probably would never get to that.
Yeah.
But there should be an expectation from the county of what that growth rate, what that ramp rate is going to be.
Yeah, so that's why they provide it as the max amount.
All right.
I hope they're, I hope they're built out in 15 years.
But, okay, I guess I'm looking at it, because from a business side, you bet they've got a schedule.
Right.
From an investment side.
Yes, they, so I'm not sure what that looks like on their end. I know that he did mention that they don't have all of the businesses that they want to come in yet.
And that's something, Commissioner, we can also request at that time.
Yeah.
Before we approve the plat or development.
I would like that.
Yeah, through the subdivision and development phases.
That's in our purview.
Make sure that's all in there, but.
Awesome. Thank you.
If, if I could comment on that question? Um, it's, and I'm not trying to defend Mister Akerlo by any means here, but it seemed like he suggested that. That number, the thirteen thousand, whatever it was, that that would include rail as well, so. I don't know that thirteen thousand is all on wheels, is all on rubber.
Um, I'm.
It's rubber.
I think it's, yeah, I don't, I don't think it does the rail.
And, and I guess.
I thought you said that.
That was traffic.
Just the traffic, yeah. The trips generated per day on, on that road, on that intersection, so yeah.
And I, and I, I respect the applicant for doing that verbally. Ten years from now, five years from now, the only thing we've got is what's in writing here.
Yeah, and unfortunately, that area is controlled by UDOT.
Okay.
Um, the minute it comes off of Burmester, I don't even think there's like maybe a hundred feet off Burmester that UDOT would still control, but. It would all be on UDOT, so that's why you tabled it the one time, asking about UDOT's schedule and. Whenever they're ready, it'll.
Third and final question. Higley Road.
Mm-hmm.
Seems to be in there. Is there any way that the county can be, that we can assert that the county is held harmless from that mess down there on Higley Road?
We currently don't allow any trucks down that road. It's not a truck route. They are required at their first stage of development. When on that, that corner, uh, triangle piece on the M G on that map right now, currently. Um, we made them put in, uh, no truck route, no truck entrance. Everything is closed off from inland port on that end. Um, so they're, they're, they can't access it. Right now, only, they were only able to access it. Because they were building out the road and the only access to get to that property was Higley. Now that there's actual road access somewhere else, they cannot access Higley until that is developed through.
Okay, thank you, Trish. You're always awesome. Thanks for answering my questions.
I don't, I'm gonna ask. I'm gonna ask. With this, can we limit the heavy trucks that go through Grantsville? Can we? Can you close that?
I wish.
To, to the traffic over so many. Gross weight?
Wa- off Burmester?
Yeah, going south.
Um.
So they're forced to go north and to the freeway.
Because it is part of a, it's. Part of the major transportation plan for a truck route. And half of it goes into Grantsville.
We did limit the other road.
Wait, Burmester's heavy duty? I thought the.
I know. Higley we can because it is capped, um, currently with infrastructure, right? Burmester, they are, um. Providing that infrastructure.
Up to a certain point.
Of our max infrastructure limit, so we can't. Um, and like I said, it is, it is marked in our transportation plan as a major road. So as development comes in, if they build that infrastructure out, which they are currently doing, we can't stop.
Okay.
Yeah, and then we have to probably figure out if, if we were to ever come up with that idea, it would be super hard, but it does enter Grantsville too, so how are we? Making Grantsville a bylaws and things?
I wish they can onboard. I'd like to see it not go through Grantsville.
But as, like I said, when development comes in and they create that, uh. Threshold, you know, it's.
Right.
That's what we want, anyway. We want that infrastructure to come in through that area. That's what we planned and projected.
Right.
So Commissioner Scott?
Yes, ma'am.
I E, from I eighty to Vegas Street.
Yes.
Is truck route.
There is a truck route.
Not a truck route.
South of, that, that's, okay. I mean, they still use it, so.
Cause it's Grantsville.
But that's Grantsville City.
That's Grantsville City. Cause we've got the other one, the Oldinkin Highway.
That they can use and just alleviate some of the truck route there.
If they didn't use truck route, they could get fined, I guess, huh?
Only if you catch.
Great. Any further questions from the commissioners? Thank you very much. Okay. Um, if none, I will move that we open public hearing.
You don't have to move.
Oh, that's right. New rules.
Open it.
Public hearing is now. So if there is anybody in the audience who would like to address this issue, please approach the podium, state your name, where you're from, sign a ledger. And speak your mind. I gotta love it. We have a huge audience and nobody wants to say anything. Cool. Alright, um, cool. Uh, seeing none, I'll move that we, I don't have to move. Public hearing is closed. Sure. Um, okay, cool. Any other further questions or discussion on the issue?
If we choose to move forward on this, um, the last parcels that we moved forward on Akerlo. Uh, we put the condition on there that those UDOT studies, uh, or those study, traffic studies go to UDOT.
Correct. Absolutely, absolutely.
It, it, uh.
Correct.
We've received acknowledgement from UDOT that they have received the traffic study and are taking it into consideration on their. Uh, twenty forty plan. That's the next one in line.
Thank you.
Your work.
Any other questions?
No, sir.
Then I would be open to hear a motion.
Get my place.
Mister Chairman, I move that we, uh. Recommend to the council an approval, a favorable. Recommendation for rezone twenty twenty-five dash zero nine three.
I'll second that.
So it's been moved, uh, with the favorable motion by Commissioner Dow for R A Z twenty twenty-five zero nine three, been seconded by Commissioner Scott. Um, any further discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Beckstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Stetz?
Yes.
Commissioner Alder?
Yes.
Commissioner Dow?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hope is a yes. Thank you. It passes unanimously. Okay, um. The next item on the agenda is the general plan amendment, G P A twenty twenty-five dash one zero three, uh. By Jake McArthur.
Mister Chairman, at this time, I have to use myself.
Okay, it'll be noted. Thank you. You can stay here. It'll just be, just put tape on your mouth. Oh, then go down there. You shall not speak from here.
Ready?
Yes, please.
Okay, so Trish, the clover planning staff, um. This is general plan amendment. Um, I know you kind of had a few in the past, but just to recap, it kinda helps to work backwards. Um, so. The applicant has requested to have a building permit on his property, but currently. Cannot be granted one because it is below the minimum acreage amounts. Um, and in order to rezone the property to make him in compliance, he has to request a general plan amendment so that the rezone falls. In compliance with the general plan. Um, and so that's what they are requesting here today.
Would you mind saying that again, please?
I, I know, it's a lot. I was trying to simplify it. So, um. Currently, there's, there's not just one property, but there are quite a few in this area that have, um. Been split off, which makes them non-conforming parcels for the M U forty zone.
Correct.
So the M U forty is a forty acre minimum in order to. Have a legal. Property to build on. Um, those are our development standards in our codes. Um, because they are below that, they have to request a rezone to be in compliance with those minimal acreage.
Even though they're already built.
Yeah, aren't these grandfathered in?
No, not all of them. Some are. Some are the forty acres and grandfathered in and the smaller ones are not. Um. And so in order for them to get a building permit and to develop any of these properties that are not conforming. Um, they have to go through a rezone. But, um, the council has made it clear that any rezones that don't conform to the general plan. They want the general plan amendment first. So that's what the applicant is requesting. Um, and a couple of neighbors around as well, cause all of their properties are in the same situation. Um, so that's what they're requesting is that the general plan changed from open space, um. To residential. And as you know, our general plan does not have, um, clear guidelines on what. Residential is. We just have low, medium, and high residential. So it is up to you guys to determine what would be best.
Trish, is it residential or agricultural?
Oh, agricultural. You're right.
Okay.
They want agricultural. But you can build houses without, yeah, that's right. Sorry. What was that?
I have a question when you're ready.
No, I was saying, it's, it's gonna be agricultural, so, and then, um, yeah, that's fine. So then the residential one won't. Yep, it's just ag.
So is, is it fair to say that we are addressing this issue? To make the current residents and or possible new residents compliant to what they already have?
Yes. Yes.
I mean, it's somehow along the way.
It happened.
And I don't know any of them. Well, I'm not sure I know one of them. Uh, two of them, but whatever. But, but, I mean, obviously. We can't change the past, but they were allowed to live there, right?
Only on some of them.
Huh?
The ones that were found, so we, okay. So there is a cutoff date to make those grandfathered lots or what we call legal non-conforming, right? And the date that you could be in compliance is that your lot had to exist or parcel had to exist the same. From January tenth of nineteen seventy-five. So if those lots that. We found. Were before that date, they're legal non-conforming. They have all vested rights and they could build on it. So that's why some of those houses got out there. The rest of them are within the forty acre minimum requirement.
Okay.
And the ones that have been split off. After nineteen seventy-five, without going through a subdivision process. Has to go through. Everything. They have to go through the entire process to make their lots. A legal buildable.
And how many are there?
I'm not sure. Um, it's quite a broad area that they requested. I didn't do all the research on what we're. Conforming or not conforming, cause it does take a lot.
Says right here, twenty-three parcels around Rush Lake.
There's twenty-three who live there?
Well, that's just what they want to be included in their amendment. I don't know how many of those parcels are either legal non-conforming or non-conforming. So they just requested that whole area.
So is it their intent to, to develop once this is, if this is approved?
Um, I'd imagine, uh, but with it being ag, the, the lowest acreage we could allow on ag is five acre minimum. Um, so, and that will probably come next, is the rezone to what zone they would like to see, but yes, they could put houses out there. Um, with those.
Which is fine. I just wanna understand the future plan.
Yeah.
So.
So it'll be up to the applicants in those areas to decide what ag zone they would like to see rezoned to. But our minimum ag is five acre minimum.
So they're. They're not telling us what, we just need to rezone it to ag.
It's not a rezone, just amend the general.
Amendment to the general plan.
Maybe they want.
Right.
Which as you can see, there's lots of ag around there, so it should be com- fairly compatible. The only question, and as you can see is in the staff recommendation, is just keep in mind that this is, uh. A lake. So we do have to be cognizant about where those houses are gonna be placed and all that can happen. As development goes on.
Let's just tell you, right?
Yeah, and they'll be forced to build with certain standards because they'll all have to apply for the same floodplain permit. And that will determine on what their development restrictions would be.
Right.
And I'm sure.
And they're, and they're well aware of that, cause they currently live there.
Yes, I'm sure a couple of the people in the audience can attest to that.
Cool. Any questions for Trish?
Trish, thanks for the heads up with the material. I went through that. I'm looking more towards the future and more towards protecting the county's ability to. Um, exercise control on that land. As an open space. What prevents that to slip into, um, some type of conservation easement that we end up. With do-gooders in the future. Challenging us and trying to hold us to that standard. As opposed to if we make the decision now, go agriculture, we retain. Um. Jurisdiction on that, because once, once we go open space permit. And some type of conservation easement. I get really concerned. I've seen ugly things happen in other states.
Mm-hmm.
But if I'm not mistaken, if I may, Commissioner Mitchell?
Please.
That would be irrelevant because they currently live there. There's current residents on there, so they can't make them move to be a conservation area.
This is for, mine's a general question for the whole subject.
Oh, come.
For a long term.
Long term.
Well, that's not trying to, thank you, but my next comment was, we're talking about twenty-three parcels. We're not talking about massive acreage.
How big are those parcels?
Good question.
Well, there's quite a bit of B M L land right in the middle.
Yeah.
And then about probably, I would say, average.
Although we know what can happen to B L M land, so.
Exactly. So you just never know.
Do we have any residential lot sizes in the?
I didn't see any.
Just the.
The only thing I saw is twenty-three parcels.
Oh, yeah, there was another, there's another map on the very beginning, but.
Okay.
So I guess my question, you know, pertains to not the people that are residing on there right now, but. How do we manage that land in the future? The other land.
Um.
I guess, I guess my question would be.
I don't know what.
Not above it.
Land.
We're not managing it now.
You, you are, you have the latitude to do it. Until. Somebody steps in and tells you.
Gotcha.
That's something other than what it is. And, and I'm no lawyer, but. Um, it would seem self-serving for us to put that as agriculture now. Maintain, maintain our management ability on that prop, those properties in the future.
I guess I'm, I'm a little confused. We don't lose purview just because we change it. To, um. M U forty?
No, from M U forty.
I mean, sorry, I mean, from, well, yeah, from. M U forty, well, to agriculture or to.
Yeah, it's currently not in, in any conservation protection.
Right.
Um, they're all privately owned. Um, which they can continue managing privately owned.
Right, they're still zoned, correct. I mean, accordingly, right?
Yes, so they are zoned M U forty, so they are vested into that M U forty.
No open space limitations.
No.
Correct, yeah. They're, they're zoned by the plan.
So, yeah, so whatever the M U forty zones, what a lot.
My research.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, we just, we don't have. They don't currently exist as a conservation.
Correct, correct. A good, 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 good question. Okay, any other, could you jump in?
Yeah, so I counted up here somewhere roughly around forty-eight parcels listed here of different sizes. Okay? And you've got a list of, is this correct here? There's actually nine applicants is what there is? But we're talking about more than what these nine applicants have. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah.
Okay. So. So there's a problem. And like I said, some of the, one property I looked on here was like, uh, uh, seven point five acres, uh, another one seventeen, eighteen. Then there's a forty acre one. There's a point five, a half acre, uh.
But.
And people have gotten these, what I guess what I'm saying is people feel acquired this property in good faith. Uh, they own it, right? Uh, I look at private property rights, which. I believe in private property rights, as long as you're not interfering with your neighbors. That's where I have a problem, that if you're interfering with the rights of your neighbors, then you, you're creating a problem rather than solving a problem. And is, what's the simplest method? To solve this problem for these applicants?
What they're going through right now. Um, they have to do the general plan amendment to put it in ag in order for them to get a rezone. In order to put their properties in compliance with the minimum acreage amounts. So that they can go through the subdivision process and not be in violation of those minimal acreage amounts.
So they can get a building permit.
So they're, they're, they're trying to be compliant with what is requested as if, as they already have, how do I say that? They're trying to be legit. They're already there. They already own it. The, the property rights are there, the zones are there, the property lines are there. They just want to be, uh. Compliant with our, with our current plan. And then also that gives them the freedom to do what they wish on their own land.
Well stated.
Yeah.
Well stated. Thank you.
We're just proposing for these nine applicants, cause there'll be other open space around them that will not be amended at this time? Or does this amend all of that open space that was green?
Whatever their legal descriptions and the, the maps that they provided in that area.
For these applicants then. So what other, if, if one of the other twenty-three lots, they'd have to go through the same process?
This is for the twenty-three lots.
This is all twenty-three. This is all twenty-three. Correct.
No, this is twenty-three lots. But, but, so you're talking about landowners, but if you look, some of these lots are. You know, the landowner owns multiple lots.
I was just curious what the opinion of the others around, if they, you know, want.
I think, as you can tell, most of them want it, and we.
We haven't heard that yet.
Have to require that all, everybody proposed and the surrounding people are noticed. So they've all received notice.
No different than what our previous.
As, as a rezone, it's all the same. So, yes.
And we, we just went through a general plan amendment in April.
For the same, a similar type thing.
For a similar property. So this is just the start.
So it'll only be, Rochelle, can you go back to that? That one. It's just those. It's just that area that they're proposing.
In the yellow.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
To ag.
Cool. Uh, any further questions? I will now open, uh, public hearing with the stipulation of if you're going to approach the podium. Please state your name, where you're from, sign a ledger, and you have a two-minute time limit. Um, and Tony, Commissioner Scott, will be my time. Yeah, great. You reminded me. So wonderful. Uh, so if you'd like to approach the podium, fantastic. Speak your mind.
She a stranger.
My name is Michael Dow. I don't think we've met.
You clearly can't follow direction, cause you haven't stated where you're from.
I am from unincorporated Twilla County. Um, so I just wanted to read to you what the definition of open space is. In the newly adopted general plan that you guys adopted in twenty twenty-two, before my time here. Open space means the area reserved in fields, pastures, parks, courts, courses, and other similar open areas. Or is the portion of the conservation subdivision that has been set aside for permanent protection. Activities within the open space shall be restricted in perpetuity through an approved legal instrument. Um, if you look at, I apologize, I was gonna print this out, but my printer caught on fire.
A little too much information there.
So if you look at advisory opinion one fifty-three from the Office of the Utah Property Rights, one foodsman. It states, um, the owner of a parcel identified as privately owned open space. Is not obligated to preserve that parcel as open space unless there has been specific dedication to a public agency. Uh, preservation of open space may be made a condition of development approval either by ordinance or imposed by the land use authority at approval. However, simply identifying a parcel as open space is not sufficient to show that dedication was a condition of approval. Restrictions on development or on property rights must be a, must be construed in favor of the property owner. A condition that property be preserved as open space may not be implied or presumed, but must be definitely stated. Once again, that's opinion, advisory opinion one fifty-three. Um, I, I think it was a mistake that was made putting this in open space on the general plan. It's quite a large area, because it is private property. There were already building rights.
My apologies.
I want my five seconds back. There were already, uh, building permits that were given in twenty twenty-two when this was adopted. Um, and so I, I just think it was a simple mistake, um, because as it is defined in the general plan. Open space provides permanent protection in all perpetuity.
Thank you. Well stated.
Thank you.
I'm Jake McArthur.
You're the one that got wrangled.
Yeah. Um, as, as Trish has stated, um, it's made it very hard for all of us out there to, uh, get building permits and stuff like that. You have lots ranging from eighteen to thirty-nine acres, which are clearly under the forty acre, um, requirement. So that's what the request is for, is for this, uh, to be requested to change the, from open space to agriculture. And this is the first step, as Trish stated, for, uh, rezone. Um, it's made it very hard to get any, for power services, permits for power services, stock water, irrigation. Agriculture building, because the lots are non-conforming. And we want to follow and comply with the county codes. So, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I'm C W Thompson, and I live in the lake bottom. Um, to, to answer a couple of questions that was asked, every parcel, every parcel is owned by an applicant that's on that list. Um, and there is more parcels not part of the application that are in the open space in that area that we're asking to move. Um, two years ago, I was able to get a, get a permit for two powers and a permit for my new home. I only have thirty-nine acres, but I, but as of now, I don't have a conforming lot. We're here to amend the general plan for the purpose of a rezone. The purpose of a rezone is to change our lots, so we have conforming lots.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Alan Fath, and, uh, I just recently purchased a property. Forty thirteen, South Highway thirty-six, Stockton, Utah. I just purchased that property in July third. And, uh, not realizing that it was under this situation with all these, these, these problems. Because the property was built in two thousand ten, two thousand eleven with permits and everything established. And I've resided there for ten years with no neighbors or any, any other situations. I've recently purchased a property, re, thinking that the county signing permits and all this stuff, it's established facility. And now I'm in the same boat with all these gentlemen out here with this pro- problem, so, um. I've only been there since July third as a property owner, but I've been out here since, uh, two thousand ten, when the property was built. So, um, I just think there should be some sort of adjustments made, cause all I'm not gonna do is just add a new home to that property. And replace the existing one, so. But rezoning is fine. I'm good with that. I just need to move forward. Cause me and my wife bought it with the idea of living there, so. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please sign.
I signed first.
Oh, look at you, ahead of the schedule. Way to go, Harry Potter. Awesome. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, uh, I'll close public hearing. And before I ask you, give it a comment, I have one. Um, first of all, thank you. I, I appreciate the process. Um, good, right, indifferent, I haven't voted, obviously, but I appreciate the process. For the benefit of the commissioners and, and the public, you know, the general plan, there are guidelines. They're not laws, they're not rules per se, right? There's zones and, and they're not even ordinances, to be quite honest with you, right? And so when you have a plan or an idea or an opinion to observe, change. Uh, the general plan and the current zoning, this is the process. So thank you. Uh, it was awesome, civil, it was professional. Um, whether you win or not, I don't know, right? But I appreciate, I appreciate the process. Um, I appreciate you going through the process of, of wanting to own land. I mean, um, well, obviously, we, oh, he's not sitting there. He's over there. But I don't know who's at White House, but we approved the White House here just shortly, right? So obviously the, the due process works. Um, but I just appreciate that, and this is part of the process. So, e- even on the commission side, they're not. And I don't, I'm not saying you, you're there doing this, but they're not rebuttling, they're not fighting, they're not protesting against the general plan. They're following the process, and I truly, truly appreciate that. So thank you. Now, anybody else have any, any questions for Trish or, yeah? Okay. Then I would be willing to receive a motion.
I'll make a motion that we amend the general plan to.
We recommend.
Recommend, recommend a favorable approval for the general plan to go from open space to agriculture.
It has been motioned with a favorable recommendation from Commissioner Alder, uh, that. For GPA twenty twenty-five one zero three, and it's been seconded by.
Commissioner Scott.
Commissioner Scott. Is there any further discussion? All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Mitchell Beckstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Stetz?
Yes.
Commissioner Alder?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hope is a yes. Thank you. It passes unanimously. And that said, the next item of business is. Well, comments, planning commission comments. Is there any?
Not at this time.
Hearing none, move to adjourn.